And the one thing that we actually can talk to them about is the host community agreement and how that works. And so at the meeting with Dogg Rotten, in July, we hired, what's the name for Paul, how'd that happen?
It's harder to see Chris. Is it called Paul's question?
Yeah.
Yeah, Paul's question.
To help us with the negotiations and stuff. And the way the state law works is there's a fund from Yellow Bar that will pay for that outside attorney, so the town's not incurring any expenses, we think. And that's, that's the problem of this whole process is nobody's been through it, so we're all just seeing how it works and...
Right. And I made the, did you get a chance to talk with Jay Franklin Assessment at all about the taxation?
We haven't gotten to that stage yet.
Okay. Again, it's my recommendation because it's, it's quite confusing. There's been some lawsuits on other solar farms in other areas of the state. So how the taxation works between the IDA and all that, it's, from my understanding, it's very confusing.
Well, that's a separate item too.
Okay.
There's, there's the pilot agreement, and then there's the host community agreement. Those are two separate things. The host community agreement is money they pay directly to the town on top of whatever tax arrangement gets worked out. And my understanding is we have no part of the tax discussion. We're just the host community agreement. Correct me if I'm wrong, and time might correct as well.
So the, so the pilot, we believe, will be negotiated with, I think, with Heather McDaniel from HUPE. Now, the host community agreement, that is a separate entity itself, and also maybe New York State. Once again, we're not in charge of all of it.
But my understanding is this, between the Town of Rotten and the Town of Lansing, you're at different levels. One opted in and one opted out. So that taxation has got to be figured out so it balances correctly with, with IDA.
And what we did is we opted, we opted out, so in our, if a business goes in on a, and in a land that's exempt from farm exemption, that farm exemption is off, and so its value at full value. So now, because this is a, a solar factory, basically, it's a power company that is putting on.
All right. Sorry, I mean...
Yeah, I had, it's confusing for everybody because nobody's been through this, so we don't know exactly how it's going to work, and New York State's kind of tweaking the rules as we go through.
Yes, exactly, right.
So we're all doing the best we can on this, and I will keep you up to date, and feel free to send questions to me or board members.
Joe, just a couple. When people ask exactly where this is going to happen, can they come, is there something they can come down here and look at? A map?
We got, we got a presentation that has a map on it. I'm not sure if that's in our minutes or not.
It should be in our minutes.
Okay.
It's roughly 30% of Groton Point, 37%.
Right, but they gave us a much more detailed map on top of that that actually showed which plots they were planning on putting solar panels on and where they were going to run some of the cabling and stuff. I can get that to you if you'd like.
Yeah, appreciate it.
So please be careful. The map they gave us was an older map. And so one of the things I'll write down in my home of assignment is to get you an updated map.
Yeah, just, okay.
Okay, so do you want them after the whole planning board when you get it?
Uh, when I get accurate map, yeah.
Okay, do you want the old one first, or do you want to wait for the?
I'll wait for the, I'll wait for the new one, as long as it's going to be forthcoming while I'm still young.
I don't know what that term means in this world nowadays, so we'll, we'll see. I'll give them, I'll just do the future.
It'll happen quickly because this whole process is supposed to be over quickly.
To answer questions from people, probably it's better if we have something to show them anyway.
I'll send, I'll send you some tomorrow.
Our second question is, has the issue of training of emergency services to handle issues with batteries and other potentially hazardous items, has that, has the company come forward and say, "Okay, we're going to train your ES people to do this"?
No, but that doesn't mean they won't. It doesn't mean New York State will make them do it. We don't know. It's, it's too early in the process.
Well, that's why I'm bringing up the question again now, something that we talked about for our own, when we were working on our own law.
Yeah, and it's in our, and it's in our law, but New York State can supersede that and say that doesn't apply, and...
I know. That's, that's why this, one of the things I'm concerned about, because people can get hurt.
Yep, and we don't, the, the other weird thing is this is in Groton, this is in Lansing, and we don't know, Groton doesn't have a solar law like we do, so we don't know whether our part will just happen in our part of the, or if it happens in the whole, or whether they go with the lowest common denominator. We just don't know. We'll find out and we'll inform the rest of the state how it's going to work. Tom?
Is, is this facility going to have battery storage?
It's going to have some storage, but I don't think it's a huge amount.
So, but the basic philosophy is these are all good questions to get up front, but we're going to have to basically size those out as the conversation starts further down the road. I can ask them about batteries, but they haven't, I don't think got the final design yet. It's probably, once again, the natural STC, right, something to change, see where it goes.
Well, it's just, you know, anything that could be a hazard for people, particularly our firefighters and emergency services people, if they ever have to go there.
Well, I agree.
In fairness to them, they're going through this review process with New York State, and like you tweak people's applications, New York State's going to tweak theirs, so it's not like they're necessarily holding out on us, though I think they could be more transparent. It's going to change because New York State's going to tell them to change it. We just don't know how.
Joe, one more quick question. How are they connecting the different parcels? Is that underground or are they overhead lines?
My understanding is it's underground, but again, that can change.
Hmm. So they have right of ways from the neighbors to connect those?
Yeah. And when you see the map, you'll see that they've got, you know, certain parcels that they've got different rights on, and they've got lines where they're going to run the cables. I don't know, it's like six or eight different parcels strung out all over, and then, you know, from this corner to that parcel, they can work across the other parcel.
Oh, really? Okay.
Apparently some of the parcels have got agreements in which you can do it on this part of the parcel, but not that part of the parcel, so...
Okay, okay.
A lot of times what they do, they're trying to put on the edge of the hedgerow if they can with farmers' lands to minimize the amount of sacrifice of land. The other thing they're doing is that they're finishing up the environmental impacts and where these things are, and that also may determine whether they can and cannot put these things. Also, you're working on a, a restoration plan when this is done. Okay, the old power plant had the same thing when they went through that. They would, if they had gone through, they would put a bond in place with an accelerator of the year for that. So when this thing had to be restored or sunsetted, there was money in those coffers for that.
Right.
And, and our law requires that, but again, New York State is going to do what New York State does, and it's probably going to change over the course of this project because New York State's kind of tweaking the rules as they go.
So the New York State law, as far as the bond is concerned, trumps our local law?
New York State's law trumps our local law completely if they decide it does.
Wow.
There's not, we have no pressure or ability to really push anything.
Cohicent.
So this is the 94C, so it used to be through the PSC. Now that's been circumvented. So the, the PSC no longer is the governing body with these types of facilities. It now goes straight to the 94C, Rachel Albany.
With the timeline of what, a year once they put their application in, it has to be approved within that time for it, so I don't know how that's going to work here. Yeah.
One year from when it's completed.
When it's, when it's what?
When it's considered a complete application.
Right. But I don't know what happens if they start arguing over how to change things and modify things. At some point, is it just, you know, whatever designs at that point after the year they go with, or if there's some type of extension? I don't know. It's a complicated process, and to say there's an absolute deadline of a year doesn't recognize that some environmental reviews might get complicated and might take longer to do.
Well, that's the whole purpose of the fast track.
I, I didn't like the fast track when I heard it come in any more than you did.
I'm from New York State. I'm here to help you.
Okay.
Okay, let's go. Yeah, we got a lot to do.
Um, let's see, quickly, and in June, we approved the contract, or approved and signed a contract to do the architectural designs for Myers Park, and that is in process as far as that helps?
The RFP's still being worked through, I think, for the legal, and they have not been signed yet, but we'll see.
We're all looking forward to it. We go to override the tax levy like we do every year. We appointed David Wolf as our rep to the EMC. I talked about that. Oh, and in June, we also approved the updated video conferencing law, which basically allows members of this board to video conference into it if they've got an illness or a couple of other things that make it impossible for you to come to the board. You can do it that way and not have to have your room open to the general public and all that. This is based on the New York State law that passed a couple, three months ago. Yes.
Joe, does that allow voting by that member?
Yes, they're, they're, just like the Zoom calls before, full participation, but a very restricted amount. Basically, if you're sick or if you're the only person who could care for somebody else, you can...
So not you're on vacation?
Not you're on vacation.
Unless you get sick.
I guess it's good to be not on vacation, but we haven't gotten to that yet. We're looking for a new town historian. Well, Miss police lament, but if you know of anybody who lives in Lansing, it would be good. We're, we're very much interested in finding someone. We are in the process of demolishing Two Auburn Road. We've got RFPs out for that right now, and as soon as we get one that we like, we're going to get together and move forward on that as soon as we can. Approved a new updated instructions for consolidated water districts outside user applications, and Water District number three came in with post-COVID numbers way too expensive for us to move forward on, so we're unfortunately telling those folks, we can't move forward on this, and looking for other possibilities. The expenses came in almost double what was approved, and New York State would not approve that kind of application with those kind of numbers.
So the laws were reported later, they'll go on tomorrow, so all the people that were involved in the solid work.
And that's my synopsis. I just, we have a few other things. Those are the things I think are most important here. Any other questions?
Board members, everybody okay?
There are questions.
It's what it is.
Feel free to reach out if you have more questions to any of us on the board.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, thank you, Joe. Okay, folks, first one up is Mosley.
Coming up, Marty?
Please. What's that?
Fine.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh.
A little younger than you.
I, I got a little confused because the resolutions called for two subdivision or two lots, and the survey map showed three lots. So you want to just give us a quick, what's going on?
So the three lots that you can be looking at, one is my home that I reside on, which is C1. Parcel D is my parents' home at 470 right now, which they'd be cutting out and selling to my son. And then what's left of Mosley Farms, the 37, 32 acres, 32.11 acres, my parents would hold on to.
And what about C2 there? That's going to become part of C1? Is that an adjustment of that?
That's just an adjustment of my home.
So essentially what we're doing, we're doing two boundary line corrections and two splits, right? The way it's coming down?
Yeah, two boundary lines between Parcel B and Parcel C.
So C2 is a boundary line correction, and A2 is a boundary line correction under, and then the true split is between Parcel A1 and B, right?
Correct.
And then, one, one thing I noticed on the survey map, if you look at, it says title information in the middle, and it says Parcel A2, C1, and then to the right, A1, B, and C2?
Yep.
Well, below the second one, it's the same tax map number. That should say 3128.12 on the one to the right. So that's got to be corrected before we record that. They're not, they're not all the same parcel numbers. Two different tax maps, correct?
Yep.
All right. Board members, you have any questions?
Playing fringe with Matt, sorry.
All right, I guess, John, we've got to open this up for public comment. Is that correct?
That's right, Alan.
So motion, please, someone?
So move.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. Public, any comments on this at all? Anyone? John, can we just go ahead and just close this again?
Yeah, there's, if there's nobody here moving to speak?
No.
I moved it to close.
I think you have, you have to stay open for another minute.
Hold on a minute. Okay, we'll hold on a minute. Any other questions on this?
No, I had the same question as you did.
As far as the lot numbers? Yeah, it was a little confusing there. Do you, do you have a ag exemption on this at all? Ag exemption?
I think it's, I think it's just star, obviously.
Okay, all right. I was going to say, if you, if you did, you'd have to get a, a new soil group worksheet with soil and water, if you did have one.
No, I don't think so.
Okay.
Hasn't it worked this quite a few years?
Oh, really? Okay.
No.
Okay, so Dean, you made a motion to...
Move that we close.
And who seconded?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. So I guess next we have to go through the short form. Is that correct, John?
Yeah, you should go through part two of the short form.
Okay. All right. Anyone volunteer to read? Do we have any volunteers?
Here.
Here, you want to read this?
Line by line?
Word for word.
Okay. One?
One, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Answer is no.
Good.
Number two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of the use of land?
No.
Number three, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
Number four, will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
Number five, will the proposed action result in adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway?
No.
Number six, will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
Number seven, will the proposed action impact existing A, public slash private water supplies?
No.
B, public slash private waste water treatment utilities?
No.
Number eight, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
No.
Number nine, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? Example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora, and fauna?
No.
Number 10, will the proposed action result in an increase in potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
No.
Number 11, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or to human health?
No. Thank you, Erin. And John or Heather, I noticed on this resolution, on the second page, if you go down towards the middle, it says now we're being resolved, that last line, it's got the wrong tax map number and owner. See what I'm talking about?
Oh, yeah.
See that? Okay. All right. I didn't see any, anything else. Anyone see in the resolution? Okay, so I need a motion to declare a negative on this.
Still move?
Let's see, who we got? Deb and who was second? Lynn, second, and I think you need to take the call, correct?
Tom?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, well said. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Okay, second item, we've got Village Solars, and I'm going to ask if we can hold off on any verbal comments tonight on this. If you would like to comment on something you hear, please send it on to the planning board, and they'll forward it to, to the, the board members, and then post it on the, the website as well. Let's see. There was a, there's a letter here about the 239. John, do you want to talk about that a minute?
Sure. So as part of the county GML, general municipal law, 239 review, this is a site plan on, you know, county, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We had sent this in for review of municipal, inter-municipal impacts. The county came back with no comments or recommendations.
Yeah. Okay, so the, the lighting that, that there was a possible concern, we, we don't have to deal with that, correct?
That's correct.
So you guys, you guys follow on that?
Yes, sir. We appreciate that. We did look for 27 Congress, David, for the...
Okay, okay, good. Before we get started on the, the next phase, I want to comment on, it's been the policy of this board and prior boards that we want to connect the adjacent subdivisions. And part of that first resolution called for, I believe, a dedicated road to connect the apartments to the north, what is it, Spring Brook? Is that the name of the ones?
Oh, yes.
And then there was going to be a dedicated road to the, along the tower, to the commercial area.
Yes.
Now, I don't believe that's been done yet, has it?
I don't think so.
Are they, Guy, are they both?
Have the public highways been dedicated?
No, but there was an extension, two pieces of an extension.
I have to see exactly where you're talking about.
Okay. I can show you on the map, or you mind?
Is that, is that extending Village Place?
Yeah, the one on the north.
Yeah.
So we had, we had this extension to the north, and we had this extension right here. This is the commercial. So they were going to convey this and convey this. So this is the apartments here, and this is the commercial area.
I think those were conveyed when the roads were dedicated years ago.
No, this, these two, I don't believe they were.
Where's the water down?
Right down here. I don't believe that's been done.
No, there's not, there's not really any system.
Well, it's not built. The question is, is it reserved?
All in hand?
I mean, just like this one, it exists only to that part, but has a good extent.
But I don't believe, I thought you were going to convey it to the town, even though they weren't going to put the road in, and you're just going to take...
And some of it's...
So, right? Okay, so we're, we're going to have, we're going to have to follow up on that, okay?
All right. Yeah, my election is absolutely good. So I'm going to, I'm thinking of the third project. You know, I guess I could be wrong on that, but yeah, it came out a couple of meetings ago, and I'm delighted with it. Yeah, it looked like we were all on that issue.
Problem is, it still doesn't show up on any of the project drawings.
It's, it's there. It actually did a boundary map of the one in the south. I don't know if that was, that was an issue. Go ahead, go ahead, water town.
Yeah, the one, I mean, on the north, it definitely did, like, a ready-made ballot, and you said on this man, which owned it on itself?
The one, it goes in front of the water, the water tower there. There was an extension, it's supposed to be an extension. We talked, Larry, we discussed this in a lot of detail many times during the meetings in the past with Larry when he was here, and it was going to be done.
It's not a survey map. I don't know if it was ever there.
Right. That's my concern, is what's, what's happened in the past, it's, it slipped through the cracks in other subdivisions in the past, where we wanted it connected, it was going to be deeded to the town, right, folks, board members? I think we've run into problems in the past.
That's correct. Some, I can even think of a couple of times when they were removed from, from the map, not by us.
Yeah. So I, I, you know, I think we need to get this, you know, cleaned up, either way, whether you work with John or Guy or whatever, let's make certain that both those pieces are conveyed to the town.
Why don't we make any of you guys do subject to confirmation that those two were already dedicated?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Why don't we make this, anything you guys do in terms of final approval, subject to confirmation that those two things have been reserved?
Yeah, right. I mean, that was part of the original resolution, that they were supposed to be done, and it never got...
They asked, they done this.
Now, haven't we occasion, excuse me, occasionally asked people to do a rough grade of what could potentially be a connecting road?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that was part of these two. I think we just wanted it, make sure that if, in the future, if we were going to connect it either by a footpath or a public road, that the town had ownership of it, so there wouldn't be any problem trying to obtain a future right of way or ownership like we had in the past.
Yeah.
That's all. I just don't want it to fall through the cracks again. So, all right, so we, we got to get that cleaned up. Board members, anything else on it?
Now, I just have one more question, which is that the right of way on the northern end by our building 36, that would go to Spring Brook, that's going to be a town road, is it not? My impression is that that extends from a town road onto the next property there. So, you know, I guess, did our power go with that conservingly? I think we have, and if we have it conservingly, if it was on our land, we can do it. But, you know, if it's on town land, then I think...
Oh, yeah. If it's, if it's already owned by the town, then we can, we don't have to worry about the one to the north. But I don't know if it's been done or not. That's my question.
I'm sure.
So, we just needed to clean that up, be aware of that, okay? All right, so where we, John, where are we at on this right now, tonight? What's the next?
I think, I think the, the board could start going through the part two environmental assessment form.
Okay.
However, two things. Because this project was previously a type one, we handled it as, as a type one action this time as well, so it's just a little longer form. But, and also, our, our town engineers are still not finished reviewing this project, so we need to keep that in mind as well. We're still waiting for, for any issues that may come through that.
So as far as going through this part two form, if we get to an item that's part of the engineering review, what do we do here? We just, we hold off on that?
Well, I would just start going through the form and seeing if you have any issues. The applicant's here, his engineer is here. They can answer any questions for you.
Okay.
Okay? But as far as actually making a secret resolution, I would advise that you wait until we have comments from T.G. Miller and something present.
Okay, so let's, let's start on that part two. Board members, you all have a copy of that in front of you?
Yep.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to help me out, so if we, we may rotate some of these, these, these numbers here. I don't see too many checked yes, but I'll start out and then we'll, we'll move on to different numbers. I'll ask you to participate. So number one, impact on land, and the highlighted title is checked yes, so we need to go through that, those items. Deb, would you mind reading through these?
No.
Okay, so we'll start with 1A.
The proposed action may involve construction on land where depth to water table is less than three feet.
No.
Proposed action may involve construction on slopes of 15% or greater.
No.
The proposed action may involve construction on land where bedrock is exposed or generally within five feet of existing ground surface.
No.
The proposed action may involve the excavation and removal of more than 1,000 tons of natural material.
No.
The proposed action may involve construction that continues for more than one year or in multiple phases. Is that a, that's a...
That should be yes.
Yeah.
So is it a moderate to large impact? It's not really a moderate or a large impact, is it? Or is it?
If you live next to the construction, it might be large, but not...
I think that it's a, a small impact, especially given that we've approved this subdivision. So it's expected that constructions can be on your way.
Okay.
The proposed action may result in increased erosion, whether from physical disturbance or vegetation removal, including from treatment by herbicides. Nope. The proposed action is or may be located within a coastal erosion hazard zone.
Okay. So John, on this one, it is checked yes, but we're saying no. Does that box need to be revised?
No, it doesn't. You're just saying that it's a, a small or moderate.
Okay, so that, that title, even though it's checked yes, we're okay with that?
All we're, all we're really concerned here is anything that might be moderate to large that we can't discuss and work out.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to item two, impact on features. It's checked no. Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, item three, impact on surface water. That's checked no. Let's just glance through that quickly to see if there's any concerns here.
And keep in mind with surface water, that the applicant's engineers designed an erosion and sediment control plan, and that this is hooking into their current stormwater plan, and that our engineers are reviewing that right now, so...
Okay, everyone okay with that being no?
I have a problem with the way that it's worded, but...
No, I guess not.
All right, let's go on to item four, impact on groundwater. That's also... All right, let's go on to item four, impact on groundwater, that's also checked, no, let's just glance through that quickly. I don't see anything, anyone, any concerns?
Yeah, I've got a question for John.
Okay.
Put this one in the last one. My problem is that we know that there's an issue. Shouldn't it say somewheres in this form that it is taken care of by the stormwater plants?
What's the, what's the issue, Larry?
Well, we know that there, there is an impact on groundwater, there's going to be an impact on groundwater, that's going to be mitigated by the stormwater plant. We know that there is, there are impacts on surface water, but they're going to be taken care of by the stormwater plant.
Larry, I'm 100% comfortable modifying this form to reply to that.
Yeah, just because, looking at the form the way that it is, if we don't make any comment, that we know that the stormwater plant is going to take care of that.
We can make comment on that when we.
Okay.
Make a resolution, but we can also, I mean, we can absolutely, you folks can find, yes, we do see a, an impact, and whether it's small to.
Well, since there has to be a stormwater plan, by the, by the definition set by the state, it does have an impact on these, and the stormwater plant is mitigating that impact.
Right, let me be clear that this form is just a draft form, you, you folks are actually the ones deciding yes or no, I'm just getting you started, okay?
Okay.
So maybe that will help you.
Okay, let's move on. Five, impact on flooding, that's also checked, no, let's glance through that quickly. I don't see anything, anyone else have concerns here? Okay. We'll move on to item six, it's also checked, no, impacts on the air, I don't think there's really anything there, correct? Okay, item seven, impact on plants and animals, and that's also checked, no, any concerns there?
No, I think we're okay.
Yeah, we've kind of gone through that in the first phase. Okay, item eight, impact on ag resources, that's also checked, no.
No ag takes place there.
Yeah, so let's move on to nine. Impact on resources, no. I think we probably would have gone over this in the first phase, so there's probably really nothing here. Item 10, impact on historic or archaeological resources, that's checked, yes, so I guess we're going to have to go through that.
No, I think that's just a typographical error by part.
Okay.
The applicant has submitted information showing that there is no historic or archaeological resources.
All right, board members, you okay with that, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Eleven is checked, no, open space and recreation.
It's adding, it's not loss.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's no across the board. Twelve is critical environmental areas, that's checked, no, and I think we're okay with that. Thirteen, impact on transportation, that's checked, yes, so I guess we need to go through that. Sandy, you want to read that, you're next in line, please?
The proposed action may result in a change of existing transportation system. A, projected traffic increase may exceed capacity of existing road network.
No.
That's no.
The proposed action may result in the construction of paved parking area for 500 or more vehicles.
Not this phase. How many, how many new, do you know what it is?
It's one and a half spaces per new unit, so, for one and a quarter of that, so I believe that comes out to 166, I didn't, I knew the math, but.
But it's less than 500 for this phase.
That's not going to be new, anyway.
Okay, go ahead, Sandy, I'm sorry.
The proposed action will degrade existing transit access.
No, it's a better.
Proposed action will degrade existing pedestrian or bicycle accommodations. The proposed action may alter the present pattern of movement of people.
No, okay, no, it should be no as well.
I had a, I had a question on the pathways for this area.
Go ahead.
Do you have some permanent pathways planned?
Well, absolutely, in that we actually were able to color code the pathways, both the ones we currently had, and the plans we're going to do on the second part, so that, you know, you didn't kind of have to connect all of the lines yourself, but we made it a little bit easier to be in that regard, and, yeah, we have a high line of hatted trails on the front half, and I believe it's very slightly as on the back path, but similar amount, so.
So, so we will be getting those maps next time?
Uh, it should be.
It's in the.
The colored ones are in?
I don't have the color.
Yeah, it's the color code. Yes, page ST 11.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Let's see, okay.
Something.
So, Tom, is that, is that adequate for your concerns? On the trails, huh?
Yes, if they're all, if they're all connected.
Yep, they absolutely are, and you can actually see that the blue part, we have our lead fitness stations in there as well. The fitness trail has been a very good and successful part of our project.
Are the crosswalks marked when it, like, goes over Village Circle North? Is there a mark on the road?
Yes, there are, and, you know, it really improved the walkable feel of the project of the crosswalks that are to have the markings and the road and that kind of thing, it really improved the feel of it as a residential company.
So, these pathways are, that are shown here, are from what's already built, is that right?
Yes, and.
And the new area that we're talking about here, I don't, I don't see pathways on the other side of Village Place there.
You can see them on, remember ST 3, you can see, it's not colored, but you can see the whole layout of what our trails are going to look like on the back half, and how they're going to lap around the network of stormwater commons and stormwater retention areas.
Okay, so these, these pathways that are on ST 3, they're more or less permanent?
Yes, they're going to be the same kind of paths as we have on the south end, however we're going to do the fitness trail, just because we have the fitness trail on the south end, but otherwise, they should be the same, same materials, same weights and all that stuff.
So there, those are, those are proposed pathways, not existing?
Yes, correct, that will be built in as we complete phases, and, you know, the network will complete itself as we get to the final phase, you know, three years from the, from the first one.
Would you guys mind actually noting that on the map, that they're, that they're proposed trails?
Okay, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, and, along with the dimensions and materials that they're going to be made out of?
Absolutely, because, yeah, right now, we don't have any trails at all up there, it's just parking lots and grass, and I think we would be recreating a, you know, a walking trail similar to the southern, southern half of the project.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, let's see, where were we at?
14.
14, okay. 14, impact on energy, that's also checked, no.
Should probably be yes. How many square feet are you going to be building on this phase?
We will be building, it will be a total of 50,000 square feet, and then you have 30,000, so that's 65,000 square feet.
Okay.
All right, so Dean, you want to read through A through E on that?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I, it's 108,000 square feet.
108, okay. Proposed action may cause an increase in the use of any form of energy. A, the proposed action will require a new or an upgrade to an existing substation, which would be known.
No.
B, the proposed action will require the creation or extension of an energy transmission or supply system to serve more than 50 or two, I'm sorry, 50 single or two-family residences, or to serve a commercial or industrial use.
We're not.
That it should be, these aren't single or two-family residences, so, you know, the proposed action, this is C, may utilize more than 2,500 megawatt hours per year of electricity.
I have no idea.
That I can't answer. But if so, I would say it's a small impact, because we're not expecting a new substation.
Right.
The proposed action may involve heating and or cooling of more than 100,000 square feet of building area completed. Again, that would be yes, but small impact.
Okay, okay, let's go on. 15, impact on noise, odor, and light, that's also checked, yes, is that, I guess, he's up next. Lynn, you want to read those, you mind?
No problem. Does say yes for proposed action, the result, then. Proposed action may produce sound above noise levels established by local regulation, I would think no. The proposed action may result in blasting within 1,500 feet of any resident, I would think no. Proposed action may result in routine odors for more than one hour a day, I would say no. Proposed action may result in white shining on any properties, I would say no. The proposed action may result in lighting creating sky glow brighter than existing area conditions, I would say no, they've given a touch sheet on the, on the light.
Right, small impact, yeah.
I would say a small impact and mitigated.
Okay, thank you. 16, impact on human health, the box is checked, no, let's just glance through that quickly. There is a group home within 1,500 feet of the school, or the property, correct?
Yes.
But that's, it's not going to have, it's a small impact on that. There's no remediation, any of these other ones?
No.
See anything else, folks? I think we're okay on that, is that all right? Other than that one, it should say small impact for our, the, the group home, that's located across the street. 17, community plans, that's checked, no, let's glance through that quickly. We got nothing from the county on that, so I think we're okay there. And 18, consistency with community character, and that's checked, yes.
Also a typo.
What's that?
That's also an error on my part.
That should be no?
Well, in my opinion, but this board has a different opinion.
Anything there, folks, that stands out?
This is the extension of the existing campus, I, to me, is not a.
It is a PDA, and it's existing, from the ground staring at it.
Okay, so we've gone through, we've gone through this, do we want to do a negative deck now, or wait for the engineers' comments?
Let's wait for our engineers' comments.
My recommendation is that you wait for your engineers' comments.
Okay, all right, so we're going to hold off until we get that.
Wait, John, here's my new comment, I, certainly by the next meeting, Rocco, they might have to come on the track, and they were still working on it, but we had a comment short. Do we want to make sure that we get a report on those adjustments by the next meeting?
The, you mean, as far as the extension of the road? Yeah, or hoping, hopefully, John, or somebody can do some research on that?
On the road dedication?
Yeah, okay, so hopefully get that by next meeting. And then one other item I noticed, on your planning schedule, it's great, you listed the. Yeah, you listed the, the plants, but typically, we ask for the heights as well, is that, can you add that to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, what size container the bushes are going to be in, and what height they are.
I mean, in the past, we've had, we've had some plants that go in that are like this high, you know, we've.
Understandable, certainly, let's keep to that, and they should be regular size.
All right, just if you would add that to that sheet. Board members, anything else on these sheets?
Yeah, I had another question on that sheet. When you look at the, the buildings, they've got R, C, all of these little things in circles, but I'm not sure, there's no legend that I could find.
Oh, so that's.
What's an S, what's an R?
The little circles represent the different types of plants that we're doing, and it's a good point, you should have put some sort of key together, but if you look at where it says R, for example, on, those are, those are shannon bushes, or trunks, I should call them, says F, those are for cithias, the Cs are.
Wait, S is for cithia?
The F, yeah, yeah, that's right.
F is for, S is for cithia?
Yep, that one is, and.
Little, little.
And cherry trees are.
Tea?
And then our peeping cherries are marked with U, so.
So what's the, what's the S, then?
For cithia.
Is that what you're saying? Yes, was the?
That's what he said, the S.
F is a.
Oh, shoot, I can't.
So what's the S, then?
And we've got some N's on there as well.
Yeah, just clean that up, if you would, put a key in there, or legend.
You have a key, it's on such a sheet.
Yeah, legend, and, and the heights of the plants, or the size of the container, one or the other. Board members, anything else on these?
I had a question.
Sandy?
So, on ST 11, I'm just, this is really minor, but if I was living in apartment 10, or say, apartment complex 116, look how far the dumpsters are away from my building.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
I know it's very minor, but.
Where's?
Well, you know, I definitely had a concern that we are worried about, you know, part of that one, in that regard, is that not only is it like the center of the project, but it's also right on the road, and we're starting to put dumpsters on the road, and you're starting to reduce curb appeals to the rest of the project, and everyone's driving in, so, yeah, we do have it down on the end of their driveway there, but, yeah, the old buildings, that definitely is the one they have to know the purpose, and I definitely do take your point, so.
I agree with that.
That one's a design challenge with this one, but I think that most of the other ones were at least able to get a dumpster within a pretty full square.
I don't know. Okay, any other questions?
John, did you just call about the actions on the Part Two? I think so. I think I'll just pass and.
Okay, so, John, anything else?
No, I've got nothing else. As soon as our comments from, from T.G. Miller come out.
All right, and one question I have, and maybe this is to the administration more, but are they comparable with comparing resolutions for the next meeting and this occasion of a possible yes-no vote? It seems like we've gotten too down to it, and, you know, to be honest with you, we are already really running up against our deadlines here, you know, we just moved people into our US building that at least, and so it would help us out a bit, just to know that, you know, if we get all this done, we'd be able to get an upper download at the next meeting, so, that we can avoid, you know, having to do anything with our work group.
Doing nowhere for our engineers. No, we don't know where we're at with our, with our engineer, I mean, we've finally just gotten a complete application, you know, we, for the most part, worked through Seeger tonight, but let's, let's see what comes back, and we'll make sure that there's no technical issues, and if there are technical issues, perhaps there's something that can be handled through a conditional approval. Or if we can discuss them at the working meeting prior to the full meeting, if we get T.G. Miller's comments back, because the rest of us are working, we go through all, and everybody has some kids, we then expect to do something in the next meeting?
Well, actually, I think you could, the two of you could just discuss it, it doesn't have to go, does it, it doesn't have to go before the board, as far as concerns.
Is this something technical? Maybe we can just work through revisions, but, let's see where we're at. I'm not the gatekeeper of, of the working meetings, those are set aside for non-project specific things, like zoning revisions and things like that.
But any red flags from the engineer's office? You could contact him directly, is that possible?
As soon as we get the letter from the engineer's office, the floor, it writes to them.
Okay.
And then they can start to resolve those issues. If they're very minor in nature, we can consider a conditional approval, but we
If they're very minor in nature, we can consider a conditional approval, but we don't, I don't anticipate.
There may not be any issues.
Right.
Maybe no issues.
Right.
Okay, but heaven forbid there was something large that required a rework, then no, I wouldn't want to commit to, to resolutions approving.
But you think that it's at least plausible if there aren't any issues?
You're moving along nicely now, Rocco, now that we've got all the information, okay?
Okay.
I think you're tracking really well. The project hasn't changed a lot since the beginning, given the board the information they've asked for, the board seems to be pretty satisfied with that.
Okay, I think, I think we're set for tonight, then.
Seems like you need to move ahead on the property easement, waiting on the engineer. You like the new passport for changes on the drawings with the keys on S T twelve, some descriptions of the plantings.
All right, perfect. What we've got to do is that, and John will certainly talk about teaching orders and.
Sounds great.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, next, we're going to have Dandy come, and like, like this one, if folks have any comments, we ask that you send them into the planning, planning department, and they will be forwarded to us as well as listed on the town's website. So, I guess, John, as part of tonight, we've got the two thirty-nine that I wanted to go over as well as part two, is that correct?
Yeah, we received two thirty-nine comments on this also, including this parking package. The applicant was also giving a copy of those, so they're.
So, before we get into part two, I'd like to go over the two thirty-nine, folks, if we could. All right, so, there's three items here I see on this one dated June twenty-fourth, and the first one has to deal with the county energy codes. I guess you guys have contacted the county in that regard? You have, do you have anything in writing, or do we have anything in writing from that?
What are you asking now?
Well, the county, typically, the developer contacts the planning department, correct, to go over the commercial and energy reduction. It says, contact our department for information on the business energy advisors program.
At this point, we, we don't have designs of the town, so that'll be coming after.
So, my understanding is.
That's not the point.
My understanding is you guys probably just said you want to use propane, so we're wanting you to engage with the county, their energy, yeah, not requirements, but desires.
Actually, it is a requirement, part of the two thirty-nine, that you do contact them, at least make an attempt, and you discuss it.
Yeah, we've sent our information.
We've got a report back from them of what their recommendations are, and I have sent it off to our architects that are working on the cannibals, and they're revisiting that right now as part of, you know, their design. So we have seen what the county's recommendations are.
You have a timeline on that, because as of June twenty-fourth, they're talking to us like they don't know what's going on.
It was early July that I saw the information from them at my desk.
So what the county's actually asking here is that the applicant document that they had considered.
Right.
The energy recommendations for new construction. This is something that the county asks for with pretty much all site plan applications. They're not requiring that the applicant follow them, they're, they're requiring that the applicant document that they've considered.
Right, so we need something in writing, a file that says that your engineers, your architect has reviewed the county's concerns, and because of X, Y, and Z, you're doing A, B, and C, that kind of thing, I guess, right? Correct?
Right.
Okay, okay, so, as far as item one is concerned, we're working on that right now, and we need to get something in writing. Okay, item two talks about a traffic impact analysis for safe access vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles entering the site. Now, I did ask for something in writing from the D O T regarding that, and we still haven't received anything, correct, John?
We've, we've got some correspondence between the, myself, D O T, and the applicant, just sort of working through sidewalks. The D O T is fine with sidewalks, as long as they're on the inside of the right way.
But I, we're.
I think that they actually worded it right way in their.
Okay.
Yeah. I don't think they meant with him the right way, but on your side over there.
Yeah, that's all I.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's part of three, actually, but I'm, I guess I'm more concerned with the traffic impact, the safety in the ingress and egress. I know the public has expressed concerns there, and did we get anything from the town engineers, John, on that? Did they recommend a, a study?
I don't think that the town engineers recommended a study, but we, this board is aware that that intersection is a major concern, so.
So, I'd, I'd like to discuss that right now, if we could, board members, on that ingress, egress, and safety.
Yeah, Larry? I think, at the very least, I'm in agreement that that needs, that needs to be brought out in the open, but I think at the very least, the applicant needs to make a point-by-point answer to the county's two thirty-nine comments, that, all their questions and all their comments. Because we need to know that these things are being considered.
Right, right.
We received the, the engineer's comments and, and the county comments, the next mission could actually, you just have, what we typically do is do a comment response, comment response, and everything, so we received all the comments now, that's what our next package is included.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Wants to be clear enough so a bunch of us unprofessionals should be able to read it.
Yeah, no, we use layman's terms as much as possible, but what we'll do is, we, we let, you know, we'll have the letter, and I'll have the title of each document that we receive comments, they'll, they'll quote exactly what they're quoting, so that you don't have to find their letter somewhere else to see what our response is, all of this straight, comment, response, comment, response. Similarly, we did, I'm sorry to try to take.
No, go ahead.
But similarly, we also transcribed all the comments received at the public hearing. We, we have a handy, handy little matrix we're creating, so that we're going to have the same thing, comment, response, comment, response, so you guys have that for your, I think you go watch your Google boxes. So, could, actually, if you want these, I can hand you these now. Or I don't want to hijack your system, sorry.
No, what I want, what I was thinking of is, is that the county's talking about a traffic impact, you know, that, like I said, ingress and egress and the safety, and I know we've heard that from the public, and I think some, some of the board members, maybe most of the board members, probably have that same concern. So, my question is, do we want to request an independent review of that intersection? Maybe not necessarily a traffic impact study, not regarding the counts, but the safety of the, the driveways in relation to, to the town highways.
Exactly what the county mentions is an analysis of this, of it, so, yes, I, I think we need to do that. We need to, we need to have the applicant do that.
That's what we're doing with D O T. I mean, D O T won't approve it unsafe. They're not allowed to.
So in regards to the location of the driveways and the intersection, that is what the Purb thirty-three review department for, for highway access does with D O T, but I think what, I think what you folks are probably interested in is what's, what's the impacts to the actual intersection? What are the wait times going to be like, people pulling in and out of the project, the timing of the light, are there any mitigations proposed? That's what I think of.
That's the way I read the county's comments, yeah.
So that's, that's not the question, the same thing as driveway access, that's the, so you're, you're looking at, for a study of that intersection, the level of service, what are the impacts of the level of service?
So, actually, then we've got two items here we're concerned with. One is the, the, is there going to be an increase in wait time at the light, and the other one is the safety of vehicles pulling in and out of the driveways. Is that correct?
That's correct, and the applicant has been working with the Department of Transportation on their highway access permit, it's in an advanced stage.
Okay, so.
Not just wait times of a light, but that's a pretty dangerous intersection, I can't tell you how many times I've seen cars go through their red light forty-five miles an hour, so I'd like to see, first of all, the speed reduced.
That's not our.
I know, I know, but I think if we had a study of that, then that's ammunition to D O T, to say, hey, this, this is.
D O T does their own studies on speed, like, what you have to do is have, have your board, your village board, actually contact them for a speed study. They won't allow a private consultant to provide that, no, they never have. If that's what you're seeking, then that's a separate item. Now, from a point of view, whether or not to do, you're, you actually got three things here, a speed study would be done by D O T themselves, at your request, I'm going to tell you right now, I, I pushed for those many times from I Town, and we've never been successful in changing the speed limit, especially on a state route, that's, you know, a major route, which this is. But that's, that's, and we would actually, we would actually write a letter of support in that, that's not probably, we would, we would help you do that. Second is an analysis of the traffic signal itself. We've provided data to the D O T, they've asked us, I'll pick the data, to someone that, trip generation, whether or not it reaches the level of all the trucks, and they kind of, I think it's a little may, or something like that.
I'm sorry, what was that?
They kind of misstated, they haven't actually told us whether or not they're going to require a traffic study yet or not, they're still looking at our data. So, we, we've provided some additional data, which actually is real data, and if you want some of that, we can provide that tonight. One of the things is, recently, Dandy has worked on whether other sites that's very similar, it's down in Troy, P A, and what we've done is we've obtained real-life data of transactions per hour for a five-day period. So what we've done is we've provided that back to the D O T to show what actually the size would, would actually see, number of customers coming through. If you guys are all familiar with Route fourteen going, going up to P A, where it goes, it's a, great angle to Route six, to Troy, P A, very similar situation, rural area, major route, and a local, a local community, in that case, it's the borough of Troy, the Troy township. And what we've seen is that it's pretty consistent traffic during the day, that we're finding roughly anywhere between fifty to seventy cars per hour going to that site, basically based on assuming that everyone that's going in there and doing a transaction is driving a car, although we know that there are multiple transactions per car, but just to be safe, we could sort of, we use those numbers. So that's, those are numbers that M D has reviewed, and it's, we've now provided that to New York State D O T as well, in kind of support of trip generation rates.
Excuse me, do those, does that particular dandy mart have truck refilling stations?
It does. It's a very.
So you've broken out the truck, truck visits?
Very similar site to what is proposed here, in terms of fueling capacity, number of dispensers, both large trucks as well as passenger vehicles.
Also, you know, three-way intersection is almost a mirror image, you know, this is going northbound, that's going southbound. It's, it's a very, you know, now this site, and actually is, the numbers match similar to what our trip generation rates are. Once, once again, so what we've done is we supplied that, we're waiting on the, the review of that data. So we're actually, it's what they call stage three, this is where they're, they're making sure that this one, they look at the intersection geometry, or the driveway geometry to make sure that they're safe, that's, that's one point. And then the other point is whether or not that traffic signal needs to be studied. The study of that traffic signal won't change it, I'm going to tell you that right now. The only thing that would change it, that traffic signal, is the timing. So what we're talking about is maybe adding a couple seconds here and there for the rain time for one direction versus the other. This, this project will not have an impact of a change in geometry of that traffic signal or number of lanes, that's what the geometry comes in place, it's just going to be like, okay, maybe the sixty-second cycle now changes to sixty-two seconds.
Do they, do these data, the location of that other one that you're getting these data from, is that close to a school, is that on a route that people will take to going to a school?
Yeah, Troy, schools right down the street from there. It's, it's the major route for many of the people in the borough area that come into the borough, so anyone that's eastbound of, of the borough comes there, east and northbound come into that intersection. Very, like I said, if you took this intersection and just rotated it a hundred and eighty degrees, it would look very similar.
So, I'm, I'm very concerned with the safety of this intersection and an analysis of what's going on there, not necessarily because of Danny Mart's coming in, because I don't think that necessarily is going to affect traffic, it's not a destination that's going to bring a lot of traffic in, but I am concerned with both our comp plan and the ability for us to look forward to potential changes in this intersection down the road, we've purchased the property across the street, if we want to provide sidewalks, and this road is not going to change to a street in the foreseeable future. It's not like we're going to all of a sudden have a twenty mile an hour street here that people can easily cross or walk on the shoulder or ride their bike and safety. So I think that, given the fact that we've got a forty-five mile an hour road here, that, you know, we have to be looking at things as a town, like how are we going to service this business district through here, how are we going to integrate trails for biking as well as for walking, so maybe multi-use trail, maybe it goes, you know, from Aravito all the way down to the school. So I think that we have to look forward to potentially making sure that there's room on this site, if there's going to be the need for future turn lanes, and if we're going to have a multi-use trail, not just a walkable three-foot wide sidewalk through there, that there's potentially going to be room in this site to make those things happen, and that we don't allow development in such a way that's going to preclude that. And so, I think that that goes potentially beyond looking at a, a D O T traffic study of what the light is like and how safe it is to get in and out of the driveways.
Yeah, Larry? A question for John. John, do we know who's doing the traffic study out here right now?
There's, there's no traffic study out.
Somebody's doing a count, because the, the count is around the road, right out in front of the driveway here.
Are they just the two counters?
Yeah, there are three of them in a row.
Okay, that would be D O T. They're doing, all they're doing is updating the traffic counts probably, and the third one might be a speed, usually it's two for counts and four for speed.
Okay, so you were talking about phase one, two, and I guess three, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, we're at the, the stage three of the permit, we're early permit.
So, once the D O T gets to finishes that stage, then, then a letter will be written to the, the town in regards to their findings? Is that what happens, or?
Oh, yeah, they, they receive all the communications, yes.
Okay.
So what typically happens is, from a, from our land development point of view, is we get our site plan approvals contingent on receiving that permit, we can't build anything without that. If we get the permit before, we typically don't get the permit before we get our, our site plan approval, but we're getting kind of close.
Yeah, we're going to chicken and egg going on, right? D O T is waiting for the town to make a decision, and the town's waiting for D O T to make a decision?
Wait, wait, I don't understand that. Why does the D O T need the town's decision?
Because they don't want to issue a permit unless the town is going to move forward with the site plan.
All right, the permit to, for the driveways, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
But they still have to comment on the safety of those driveways, no, before that?
They pretty much have, it's, it passes, it's past stage two.
We, well, our, this board hasn't received anything from.
We haven't received that?
No, I mean, they won't go to stage three if there was a question on the location of the drives.
So, can we pull back a second, because I'm not, I'm not sure what this board is trying to get at. Are you, are you trying, are you asking for a letter from D O T approving of the driveway placement?
I'm saying this, I'm not a professional engineer, and I've looked at the site, and I have concerns about the traffic coming in and out and the safety there, that, that's my personal. Board members, does anyone agree with that or disagree with that?
I agree.
Yes, we agree.
Okay, so, but that's what we're discussing with the traffic impact study, that has, that's not the same thing as just a drive, are you, are we talking about the locations of the driveway access, the actual curb cut permits, and the safety of the turns in and out?
The, I guess, what would you say, the, the whole thing?
The way I read this, these two thirty-nine comments, one, two, and three, they address. The way I read this, these two 39 comments, one, two, and three, they address the safety of the intersection, the safety of the location of the access driveways, and they want commentary on what's going to be done about pedestrian access, sidewalks, things like that. And we need a point-by-point response from the, from the developer, from the applicant, on their comments on the two 39 comments. We need to, we need to have a starting point.
Right, but I, I want, I want the DOT to put something in writing to us saying that they have reviewed this and they found either a negative or positive on that.
I, I don't disagree, but good luck on that because the DOT is a pain in the, took us.
Jamie, could you, could you request documentation from the DOT on that?
Sure.
And provide that as part of your next submission?
No problem.
Thank you very much.
We're going to wait till later on questions then.
I spoke with DOT.
I'm sorry?
I spoke with the engineer reviewing the plans at New York State Department of Transportation. They said that nothing's been approved yet. In fact, the information submitted was quite incomplete, and they are nowhere close to approving this, and they are probably going to require a traffic study.
So as far as the planning board, we are concerned, again, board members, we would like something in writing from the DOT, correct on this?
Yes.
Are we all in agreement? Everybody not in agreement? Show of hands in agreement?
I think they'd also like a detailed study of traffic patterns. Are there certain hours of the day that, that need to be attended to?
I think that's what he was saying, right?
So what typically happens if you do go to the traffic study, you determine peak hours, that's when you study. What we've found is there really isn't a peak hour, that it's pretty consistent throughout the day. Actually, we're starting to see more traffic at lunchtime because these are probably lunch destinations.
Independent, not Dandy's data. Sorry. I'm asking for an independent study by someone other than Dandy.
Well, we, we want to start with the DOT first. We want to hear what the DOT has to say, and then the board can make a decision if we want to take it to the next level, I think. Is that correct, board members?
The DOT requires a traffic study that would be performed by consultant, okay, for by Danny, that's, that's the token.
So that they would, they would go, if they review it and they say, we need a traffic study, they would get back to you and to you and to us saying, we reviewed this and we feel that a study is necessary, is that?
So far, we have not reached the thresholds of a traffic study.
Okay, but we still, the board still needs something.
Yeah, well, that's part, that's part of the stage three, once we get to the stage three. They, you do have copies of, you do have copies of our stage one or stage two. That's the, that is, we're keeping you guys in the loop, we're not.
Yes, sir.
No, it's not in here.
Actually, I actually don't have, unless it's, unless it's very old correspondence.
It was a long time ago.
Okay, it could be part of an earlier package. So that's at the DOT level. Now, in front of you, you have a recommendation from the county. They're recommending that you require a traffic impact study, okay? And it would require a super majority vote of this board to, to not?
To not do that.
For not do that. So at this point in time, if the board is, I think we need just, if the board decides to do that, let's just get it done now and, and make that recommendation now rather than later, is what, what I'm thinking.
Well, I, I have a concern about a, a traffic study when school is not in session because I think that really changes the dynamics when schools are in session.
I mean, they, they take that into consideration, the engineers.
So we typically, just, we haven't hired anyone, but we typically work with a professional engineer who's done a lot of work in this area, who has that, that nature. So, and then the other thing they could do is if there is an issue, depending on what DOT requires, they can, and by the way, this would be a DOT side. This would not be up to, from a scoping point of view, DOT would determine the scope. Not, not fake engineers, not Danny, it would be DOT. It would be basically, they could actually use data from cell phones, distorted cell phones if necessary, because that's what they've done in the recent past because of COVID and changing traffic. However, for something like this, I think they pretty much can use existing data that they have out there. But if they need to do traffic calls, they can do traffic calls as well.
Okay, so I think, should we, we take a show of hands in regards to board members if they want to see a traffic study, is that?
I think whoever you're comfortable coming to consensus on it is fine.
Okay, so I'm going to ask board members if you feel that a traffic study should be done on this. Let's see, a show of hands.
Al, may I make a suggestion?
Yep, go ahead.
Ask the board for a vote on whether or not to override the county's two 39 requests.
For one, two, and three, or just?
The whole thing.
So we'd need a super majority to override that?
And if, and if, you know, if everybody votes that to uphold the county's comments, then we know we won't have a super majority to override.
Okay. Board members, everyone okay with that?
I don't see the, the value in that, Larry. If this board feels that, that traffic is a, is an issue that rises to the level of your concern, then, then just be clear with the applicant and ask for a study.
Well, it just seemed to me that, you know, rather than just saying, we're going to override one, or we're not going to override one thing, this, this is the thing that was brought, brought to us on. And if the chair asks for a decision not to override the two 39 comments, that's an official way of dealing with this rather than just coming up with a request for, I mean, either, either way, whatever you're comfortable with, Al.
I'm, I'm, I'm looking for direction from everyone here. We haven't discussed item three yet as well, Larry, so, I mean, if we?
That's what I mean.
So before we, before we take a vote whether to override this, I think we need?
I think we want to look at item three and the comments on the back.
Yeah, now, the comments on the back, my understanding is something that's recommended, it's not required, that we can, we?
So I don't have, I didn't know we were going to go over two 39s.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What's on, what's on number three?
That's just deals more with sidewalks, I believe. Item three is work with DOT, incorporate sidewalks in the site design, pedestrian, bicycle network, walkable town center. That's pretty much it.
Consider the names of all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, public transportation riders, motorists, and citizens of all ages and abilities, including children, the elderly, and the disabled.
Yeah, and as part of our next submission, we're going to pick out what we're proposing for internal.
Right, so you're going to, you're going to map out what the sidewalks are down the road?
Yeah, and the, the way I understood the DOT comments is that it means we can internal to our site, not in there right.
Right, that's how I understood it.
Okay, so if we're all on the same page, what we're going to do is provide, and because of grading and all that, and final site plan details, we'll make sure that we show what we're proposing, and that's something we'll be, obviously, we're going to do with the guys.
Okay, so I guess, so to follow Larry's line of thought, I guess I would make a motion to override the, the county's plan? Yes or no? Is that, will we take a vote on this, or is that a show of hands again?
I'm, I'm just a little uncomfortable with the whole idea of carte blanche, looking to override a whole letter. These are, these are point by point recommendations, which by the way, every single one of those could be handled through the secret process, which you've got the part two form.
All right, all right, let, let's go this route then. But I'm going to ask the board members to show of hands, who would like to see a traffic study? Yes, I'm going to ask no, and then I'm going to ask abstain. So all the board members, show of hands, who would like to see a traffic study, an independent traffic study at this intersection? Please raise your hand. Okay, so we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, so, I guess, who would vote no? And who votes abstain? Okay, so a majority of us would like to see a traffic study.
So define independent traffic.
John, can you help me out there?
Not the DOT. Not the DOT. Potentially beyond what the DOT would do. Again, we're talking about traffic issues that are existing, that are not necessarily created by the dandy with several nearby roads, common road and beach road, and an intersection that's potentially going to change in the future, that we purchased a piece of property across the street.
We cannot do this. I, I, you're going way beyond what the scope of secret requires, if that's the case.
That's correct.
I mean, we, we always should be looking at project specific impacts. I apologize.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Really arguing with you now.
But again, but again, we, again, it goes back to the concern of safety at that intersection with the traffic coming in and out of those driveways. Now, how we, how we get a professional to educate the board here that the way it's designed is fair and safe, that's, that's the bottom line, what I'm looking at.
We can handle that. If the scope goes into future ideas at the top of the, of the, you got, you got to do something.
Just trying to illustrate number three here, and the, and the fact that the DOT isn't going to talk to us about potential sizes for sidewalk and biking paths.
That's on traffic study. That's on traffic study.
Exactly.
And we can trust that.
Yeah, that's a separate item. Guy, can I call on you to maybe, I think you understand what the board is looking for? Can you provide us some guidance at all? Do you mind?
Well, if you're, if you're looking to get a traffic impact study, then just require a traffic impact study and, or hire a traffic engineer to do a traffic impact study and let them scope what's required based on the nature of the project.
John?
Completely agree with Guy. You've asked for a traffic impact study.
To me, that's what we just did.
Yeah, that's, that's what you just did.
All right. So I guess the board is going to be asked, it's the board's request that a study be done highlighting the safety of those driveways.
Hired by Danny. That's all I'm pressing on that. We, we don't mind this, I'm just, I'm making sure, because I'm hearing people use terms third party, independent. What we would be doing is hiring a consultant. Have a consultant, not, not fake engineers, we wouldn't perform it. We would hire a traffic consultant that's well known there. I've worked with them many times, and then they would actually perform the traffic study.
But that consultant is indeed, is independent, it's not?
I'm, I'm, my license, when I stamp a, a drawing, it's not independently stamped, hired. He's not a licensed designer, I am.
And then, and then we could provide that to the town's engineer for review and comment, correct?
That's correct, yes, absolutely.
All right.
But the bottom line is it would be something that would be approved by DOT. We're not going to, we can't, you can't recommend anything beyond what DOT would recommend. So if, if DOT says?
Yes, you can. Yes, you can.
Folks, folks, please, please.
So if DOT approves these, these driveway access points, you cannot change what they recommended and approved. So if they say it's going to be 25 feet radii, and you guys, your, your engineer says 30 feet, it's DOT's engineer that, that, that's their, it's their, they own the permit, you don't own the, the traffic permit.
Guy, are we okay with that?
Well, we're, we're sort of talking apples and oranges. It's starting to sound a little more like pencils versus suspension bridges. But what the permit is that's approved by DOT is DOT's jurisdiction. Or what the site plan is that's approved by the town is the town's jurisdiction. And if they don't mesh up, then the developer has pickup to work its way over.
Okay, so I think we, we would like to see, see you hire a consultant to review the, the driveways and the safety as, as well as traffic count, folks?
We want a traffic impact study, and we want the, the traffic impact study to include the effects of the driveways as is presented by DOT.
Folks, Deb?
I'm, I need to go back a while. I'm not sure, I don't know what the site plan is as yet. I go back, thanks to the wonderful new website you've got going, do former meetings, and the, the site plan seems to change. I mean, sometimes there are two duty duties for the cars to go through and get gas, and sometimes there's one. Sometimes there are four parking places, so.
Go back beyond the last meeting. The last meeting's documents are the last things that we submit. Yeah, I, I, I'm with you because I actually brought just the, the site plan tonight that had submitted. Now, we are going to submit a revision at the next meeting, and that will include the sidewalk areas and the pathways to the side.
And the comments people have made?
We'll, we'll trust them, but that's, yeah, and any, and any of that informs the changes that we make, yes.
So the comments, you back to the comments that were made in public, you assembled those and emphasized them in a ranking. You're just, you're going to state what the concern was, and then your response to that concern, you're going to put it in writing for the public to review, is that correct?
For you to review, yes.
Right, all right. So, all right, so I guess, are we okay with this right now in regards to the, the traffic study and the safety, the driveways? Board members?
I think it's important we do that, and though we're getting into make a decision.
Okay, all right, so I think we need that, we need that DOT response and that, that study. What's that?
Oh, you can look at the comments from the two 39.
You mean the second page comments? I guess we could, we could highlight those as well, they're just, we don't, we, we can or cannot, I mean, we don't have to.
We will actually provide a response for each one of these comments.
May I make a point, Al?
Yes, sir.
As far as the county's concerned, they, what they don't know is that we've already done, we've already had discussions with the developer, with the applicant. On the first comment, lighting standards. The second comment, that's undergoing because there will be a seeker for a stormwater management plan. And we've just received a comment from the Kugel Lake Scenic Byway people. Which, you know, I was rather surprised, but it seemed quite favorable.
Yes, correct, you're correct.
And as far as number four, those are all things that we're working on as, as it goes along. Number four, or the fourth, it doesn't have a number on it, but it's a bullet point. The fourth bullet point goes back to item number three on the front, as well as some other things that we're already discussing. But what, what I was talking about is we want to, we want comments and a response to each of the three numbered items.
Yes.
The requested modification.
Yes.
I want to make it clear to everybody that we're already in discussion with the applicant on most of the items that the county has listed in comments on the back.
Yes.
Which the county, of course, does not know, unless they read our minutes.
All right, so as far as the rest of tonight, do, do we want to start in on the, the part two on this? John, do we want to start on part two?
Do we start with part one? What's that? Has everybody reviewed part one? Are there any comments?
Yes.
John, do you have any comments on part one? Deb, you have something?
I do have a comment on adopted land use plans, item C2. Do any municipally adopted comprehensive land use plans include the site where the proposed action would be located? And I think that's a yes. That's part of the comp plan. And the comp plan has specific general recommendations for the use of that particular
And then on the, on A, the first page, it says 4.073. I think it should be 4.7. That zero need to be taken out on the description.
I've re-corrected those already.
Oh, so we don't, yeah, I've got an old?
I don't have.
Okay.
There are the ones I need checked to make sure that they're listed.
Under the brief description of the proposed action, it says up to four EV spaces. What does up to four spaces mean? Maybe one, if you feel like it? Maybe none?
Oh, I think from, from environmental impact, that we're, that we're actually, environment impact, the total number. So what we actually did, we showed a bank of four future spaces that would be, and last time we spoke about it, those are going to be done on a market basis. We don't have an actual number that we're going to, so we're going to actually do.
Those are in addition to the other two that you?
Actually, my, my recollection is you talked about before and said as many as two more could be added.
Right. Right. That we actually, actually, we showed space for four, that there was going to be two added at first, and then up to four, maybe, or initially, that we might, but we would actually potentially give you more beyond that, because as you move forward with gas going away, we're going to need more spaces.
And then...
I understand.
No, Your Honor, we started out with two shown on our original submission as to the building. As our discussions evolved, we eliminated the two positions close to the building, and we created on our plans a larger area that could handle up to four chargers. That doesn't mean our intentions are, depending on grants that were available through NYSERTA and programs, whether we would do four initially, or we may start out with two. And then, but again, the plan is to provide the room for a larger bank.
And the condos will all be underground. I mean, it's all ready to go.
Right.
So, couldn't you say, uh, between two and four spaces?
You could have, yeah, it's, I just...
I mean, so that we know we're going to start out with two.
Yeah, that's fine. That's, that's fine.
And then, related to that, page seven, uh, in the middle, number five, six, number seven, it says, uh, action, access to electric. That should be yes. And then below that, bicycles, you are going to have a bike rack. That should be yes. You are adding those. I saw.
Yep.
Um, board members, anything else on, uh, part one?
Yeah, um, C2B is the site of the proposed action with any local or regional special planning district designated state or federal heritage area. Well, the Kewa Lake Scenic Byway seems to...
I don't know if I put these up. I don't mind putting yes here.
Okay.
I don't think the, I don't think that those mean that, Tom, but they've already come out on the table.
Okay. And then, um, D on page, page four, DH, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that will result in the appoundment of liquids such as the creation of a water supply reservoir, pond, lake, waste lagoon, or other storage? Does your underground stormwater storage?
It's not conservative, no.
It's not?
That's, that's correct.
Okay.
What they usually mean by that one is whether or not we need to get over a million gallons of water for free.
I have all...
And then, um...
That's right.
On page six, number E, how much impervious surface will the project create in relation to total size of the project? You're saying the whole parcel is going to be impervious surface? It looks like the septic, the septic area is not going to be impervious.
No, I, I, I think, um, is that the table that you're looking at?
Page six, I'm looking at.
No, it just says 4.7 acres impervious.
Under...
Hold it.
And it says the same size as the parcel.
I think we actually revised that for some reason. Well, yeah, but no, that's not correct. It says 4.7, because that is a whole different size. We were, we actually are at 63% coverage rate, so I can do the calculation.
Sandy, you had something?
Yeah, on page eight, oh...
Let the guys catch up.
Yeah, let me, let me grab that one. A second.
Does a proposed action have a potential to produce orders for more than one hour a day? I mean, most definitely does.
No, what they mean by that is...
Order emission?
What orders do you think?
I'm thinking of trucks that are sitting there, running trucks.
That could be, that could be any, then you would do that for a Dollar General, too, then. Did you put that for your dollar?
I don't...
No, they don't, they imply that as more like a factory or, um, agricultural operation or, somebody gets orders out of the world.
Which one, which one is that again?
Oh, page eight.
That's not what it says.
Well, if it was deliveries, then it'd be any, any site that...
Absolutely.
That commercial. So, if the Dollar General had that same question.
I don't remember what we...
And whatever your consistency, as long as you're consistent, I don't...
They had deliveries in the back of the store, not trucks coming in.
Customers are next to it.
Page, page eight, and...
Do I put, yes, I'm sorry.
I don't recall what we looked at.
They're really, I'm just trying to be consistent.
Can I comment first?
Yeah.
New York State has a law that requires that, uh, engines on trucks are not allowed to run for more than five minutes. If they're there, if they're in one place for more than five minutes, then the engines have to be shut down. And unfortunately, uh, the property owners don't have police authority to do that. DEC or the county sheriff or the state police do, but the law is in place. And if, if residential neighbors are concerned about that, then all they need to do is make the comments to the, uh, ECOs from the DEC, or to the sheriff, or to the state police.
Have you seen signage indicating that trucks have to turn on?
When you fill out your, when you get your CDL for New York State, one of the questions you have to answer pertains to that law.
We post signs at all of our sites that state that law.
Good.
Uh, again, as Larry said, policing of it is, is a different issue.
Right, I understand.
But it, we do post signage that says idling per New York State law, idling greater than five minutes, not prohibited, not, is prohibited.
Good.
Folks, anything else, then?
Again, on page eight, N2, will proposed action remove existing natural barriers that could act as a light barrier or screen? Uh, there's that hedgerow in the southern part that is a pretty significant screen, I believe.
I, I guess because we were replacing that concrete. No, yeah, there is, because we're, we're having a, that's probably agreement with the, that property owner, is that we're maintaining a certain amount of it, and then we're replacing a certain amount. So, that's part of it.
We'd like the specific details on that.
Sure. But actually, the way you say it, we probably should put yes and then put a proviso, what we're going to do.
Yes.
Great, folks, any...
That was N2?
Yeah, NII, which was...
Yeah.
That's because you're moving the boundary there.
Yes, right.
Deb, you have something?
Yeah, I, um, section E2, natural resources near the project site. On item D, it says the average depth of the water table is half a foot to one and a half feet. How are we going to have gas tanks if the water table is...
So, that's the lowest spot of the site down towards the south. So, that, it's not where, I know they use, it says average.
But it says average depth.
They, they use, so our guys were conservative, we used the worst case scenario. That's why they did that. So, I'll, I'll change that. But I think we, I hate to say this twice, I think they have a newer version. So, I think we changed it. Maybe we didn't ensure that. But, uh, that was for down where the, the septic system is.
So, the septic system is one and a half a bone up?
It's a rain system. So, we would take care of that. That's, that's where our guys were, were concerned about, because the, that, we're, my, my, my septic design was actually, he reviews for health departments on all of the state, so he's very conservative when it comes to that. So, that's why we're going to do that.
This is a slight though.
That's not a, it's not a landmark.
Okay. And then, one other thing, it, it talks about, um, um, state register historic places, and we did receive a letter, correct, from someone stating that there was no negative impact? Is that correct?
Yeah, we, we probably got the, the shipload. So, as part of the stormwater pollution prevention plan, we're required to do the shipload coordination. That's a new thing that the city, you, it populars that, and I believe you have a copy of the shipload letter.
You do have a copy of that. Stated a date before.
Yeah, I thought I saw that somewhere. That, that showed that was a negative.
Yeah, so anytime you get a SWIP now, you'll get that letter.
Okay, oh.
Because we can't go any further in the SWIP process without it.
Okay. So, uh, board members, do we want to move on to part two tonight, or do we want to wait on that? What do you, what would you like to do?
I'm still on part one here.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Uh, the E2, natural resources on or near the project site, what is the average, it's a bedrock? And A?
We didn't count.
I don't know what you're talking about.
You didn't discount or any?
No.
That's what you're saying?
How deep were your holes?
I don't know. It's something I apologize.
Because it seems like that would be a concern with the septic tank.
Well, and the stormwater.
Yeah, we're, we're, so when we do stormwater and septic, there's a limit. So, we make sure we do that somewhere.
A six-foot pit is required in Tompkins County and, uh, for, for the septic.
For the deep test hole?
Yeah.
Yep.
Have you done, have you done that?
I'm not sure they've designed that site yet. To be honest, I don't know.
Ronnie, do you respect?
We know we have to go, go through that coordination with the septic system design.
Right.
We're also doing some environmental stuff, too, so...
Uh, I'd like to see a little more information on depth to bedrock.
We, I think we gave you the USGS soil survey information, which is what's typically required from the EAF. We're, we're doing more investigation out there. I don't know if we're done yet or not, so...
Well, look into it.
We'll, we'll give you, we'll give you all the data.
Look into it, because not too far from here, when the water line was put in, they had to blast to get below four and a half feet.
And we have to raise them. We're not, we're not going to be blasted, I'll tell you that for sure.
No. Just, just as an illustration of where bedrock lies around here, it's fairly shallow, and it's not uniform.
Oh, except, yeah, we don't trust, that's why we actually do this, additional investigations. I don't think we, I can't remember where my, the geoprobe was.
They did them, you know, crazy thing with last week, and they got posted on, but I believe until next week.
Yeah, so we're going to be actually doing some more of what they call geoprobes, which are smaller diameter bores. So, we'll, we'll give you all that data, too, if you'd like.
Okay. Tom, anything else, board members?
Page 13, H.
Yes.
Is the project site within five miles of any officially designated and publicly accessible federal, state, or local scenic or aesthetic resource? And they mentioned Tagannick Falls State Park, but there's Myers, there's Salt Point, there's the scenic byway.
That's also populated by the, the DEC map.
Yeah, we talked about that last time.
Okay, and there's the scenic resources inventory. There's a few sites right that are within five miles.
So, what happens is when we put that into the map where it actually self-populates, we don't actually, we can't actually type on it. But if there's items that we'd like us to include on there, can you, someone, John, will add to it. We can PDF right off the top of it. But what, what happens, there's a number of these items that we, we don't have access to, but we can use PDF right if we can.
I can, I can send you a copy of the town's scenic resources inventory.
That's not what I had.
And the part...
That's to be educational?
Yeah, we, we don't mind adding any of that stuff. Obviously, it's better for the record.
It is a little odd that since you're servicing cars and trucks, you have Tagannick Park as being 4.8 miles away.
That's populated by the, by the state software.
Ah, okay.
It, for instance, it might list the scenic byway, but it wouldn't list, um, our local scenic resources. If there are state listed scenic resources, they'd be listed and they'd be on there. That's why John suggested that you send ours to them.
Yeah.
And then, that's, that makes sense. It makes it a more robust record of the project there.
Well, I just rented something on VRBO, and it said I was 10 miles away from it, but it was in freaking Maine, which means you go up a peninsula, around, and then down a peninsula, so you drive 50 miles.
That'd be, that'd be, that'd be, I think it's, what it does is it just puts our property on the map like that, and then it just, whatever pops up in the GIS at, at all, it's...
Absolutely.
Yeah. At least you catch us on, let's put it that way. The whole way was not, was you had a...
You had to work.
I don't know, pull up the records.
Okay, folks, anything else? Okay, I think we're okay with part one, it sounds like.
Well, it needs to be corrected and brought up to date, yes.
Right.
We'll, we'll see in the EAF.
Okay, folks, do we want to do, uh, part two tonight, or do we want to put that off? What would you like?
Well, we've seen some, some omission on the first part, that, you know, people want to go through it.
And we know that part two is going to address traffic concerns, and that gives us some more time to get some response, hopefully, back from the state.
I'd also like to see any updated site plan. Um, if there's going to be a new site plan, I mean, there, there are a lot of suggestions for things that would make this better, if possible.
Well, that's your point. If there's something that you want to see in the site plan with what's yours, not because of what we're doing is we're, we're updating the site plan based on what the current site plan that we have in front of you has, but also addressing some of these comments, like getting sidewalks and the walkways and that portion. That's the main changes to the site plan. Otherwise, you know, this, this last pretty much sure is what we're going with.
So, it's still a crooked building?
Yes.
What was that?
Yes, it's still oriented. The orientation is still the same. One other thing on that, um, the propane storage tanks, where are you going to be putting those?
Yeah, we'll add some.
Yeah, it's not going to be underground, is it? Can you do those underground?
It would be underground.
Oh, it would be underground. Oh, oh.
One comment on the, um, orientation of the building. Not for nothing, but it is oriented according to some of the suggestions we've seen at the state conferences of the, uh, State Planning Federation as far as, uh, use of positioning a building on a site to encourage traffic to the rear of the building and to create a pleasant presentation to the front. It may not need to be necessarily symmetrical with the others. When we, when we initially considered this, that's one of the things that we had in mind, was some of the recommendations that we've gleaned over the years from the State Planning Federation.
Right, thank you.
So, in my mind, the orientation of the building is a valid location that it follows current planning, um, recommendations.
But we did hear a number of comments that...
We did, and that's why I'm making this comment.
They wanted to, to face each other, right?
Yeah.
It also facilitates dividing the island into two gas pumping islands, which is not as intrusive. It also allows for landscaping between the road and the development, which I think is a positive.
So, there are considerations that may or may not have been thought of by the people that made the comments, of the additional landscaping that's made possible by the offset positioning of the building. Uh, you know, there, there are reasons that, uh, the Planning Federation has come up with these things, and they are professionals, and we do take advantage of their, of their recommendations and teaching.
And it is, um, I forgot.
I think in this case, though, you've got a building that is facing a very striking historic building, and you might like all the rest of the stuff blocked, which I'm not sure the sideways orientation would block views of all the gas tanks.
I think we looked at, we, we looked at initially, we looked at a lot of different orientations, right in the very beginning, months and months ago. And after going over, also, there was a concern with visual site clearance. If we pushed it too close to the curb.
Yeah.
There was a concern there with the DOT not approving that because it had to sit back off from the road for, because of that intersection in sight. So, I'm...
So, I mean, we did discuss this in a lot of detail at the initial meetings, and I think we came up with, this was the best design that facilitated different concerns, I believe.
Yes, that's correct.
I think we did eight concepts. And, yeah, and that's the one thing I do want to walk away from tonight, is making sure that we're locked into whichever way we're going with, just to make sure that, you know, we don't get bumped another month by having to revise our site plan.
We know that everybody is never going to be pleased with everything, but I wanted to clarify the reasons that through our long discussions, which everybody here was present for, the reason that we wound up with the diagonal placement. Architecturally, I think it's pleasing, I don't think it'll detract at all from Rogue Harbor, I think if anything, it'll accentuate it.
It won't. Architecturally, it won't, it's an abomination.
Because a school full of architects up on the hill, if you bring a bunch of them down here to comment on that particular site, no one's going to say that means architectural standards.
Can someone say something? Seriously, there's a time for this.
Just to make you aware, studying at the world renowned Cornell School of City and Regional Planning, no one in that school would fly a building that way, not a single person. It flies in the face of all aesthetics. It's ridiculous.
Okay, let's move on. Do we want to deal with the part two at this point in time, or do we want to make certain that those boxes are checked correctly? Do we want to wait for the DOT and their comments on the drive, et cetera? What do we want to do, folks?
John had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Given that the applicant's going to revise the EAF and respond line by line to all of the comment letters.
Okay.
I would suggest you may want to wait to go through the part twos, and some of that information may be taken care of or better addressed, or at least somewhat addressed.
Okay, that's kind of what.
We can address your draft EAF tip, that's really what we really want to come up with tonight, is copy your draft EAF, and if there are any other major changes that you need to do, because at the next submission, this will be like, you know, final design detail type stuff, you know, things that need to be tweaked, maybe we curve the sidewalk here, add a landscape here, move the bike racks, that kind of thing, but we really want to get fixed and place everything else.
So are you asking the boards to go through the part two?
No, I don't mind, I actually kind of went through the drafts, I think this is pretty straightforward, I don't have an issue with waiting for the part two, like you said, because we're going to give you additional information.
Okay.
And we'll highlight, we'll be able to highlight it a little bit better by having this with us. I know it's only a draft, it's a product, but, you know, finalize that, that's not a problem. My main concern is really, you know, Jamie, you got to throw out this plan and redo it through September or October, you know, that's when things get creepy.
Well, I guess I got a question, do you want the planning board have a chance to discuss what they heard from the hearing itself, and the letters they received, to talk about the site plan, and see if there's modifications we would like to see?
Well, that, I think, would come up as we go through part two, there are things that the public had commented on, or you may have comments on, that would show up in part two, am I correct, John, in that?
Absolutely, yeah.
He goes line by line.
So I would say, at this point in time, I think we should put off discussing part two until we get your comments.
Well, if you have major comments, I would love my, are you indicating there's something that was highlighted that requires some changes on the drawings?
I, go ahead.
Well, I had a couple of things to bring up, one is, you heard from the previous applicant, where we asked for size of plantings.
Yeah.
So that's certainly something that we're going to want to see, and I think, from what you had to say in terms of the DOT, you know, saying that walkways would not be in the right of way, that, I'm assuming that plantings can be, and so those are going to have to be appropriate, because we got overhead lines there.
Sure.
So that's certainly a consideration.
Actually, and if you noticed, when we did do the plantings, we had a couple that were in the right of way before it got to the overhead line, and then when it was overhead line, they came back inside the site. But, yeah, we took the landscape plan, and actually I think it does already, the gallon size of the bushes, you know, number five, number four, whatever it is, and the diameter of the trees, which that gives us some of a height, so we have, I don't know that to everybody, that's.
So, and I can tell you that personally, what I'm looking for, we've seen two different kind of ends of the spectrum, we have two wedding barns, one wedding barn put in for Cynthia that was like one little twig.
Yeah.
And the other wedding barn put in some beautiful, fairly good sized maple trees, and so, you know, the more mature, the larger we're going to see things, the better. So that would be one comment on landscaping.
Yeah, I figure smallest gallon size would be three gallon, I think we go to five gallon size bushes, I mean, we don't put the little, like you said, we got.
And then, again, back to the comments about safety for people who are not driving, so when we talk about sidewalks here, we're not just talking about sidewalk that people can walk on, so some of the, some of my specific concern is making sure that we have enough space on that for bike traffic.
Yeah, we're thinking more of a walkway that's part of the pavement, but it would be stretched wide enough for multi-use, is kind of where we're thinking we're going, I mean, we didn't draw it out yet, so.
I mean, multi-use is definitely what we're looking for, we're also looking for, obviously, safety of that multi-use that it's not going to be, some places people are going to be driving.
And also some, you know, well-defined, so just the other, when it comes to safety, it's definition, you know, not just a little, you know, top of, a well-marked walkways and potentially some signage, we got to look into that.
Yeah, potentially something that is a different level.
And then also, there's another piece there, crosswalks through the, through our driveway locations. Oh, one of the comments I think we got was, just making sure that there's space for future crosswalk at the intersection. I don't know if I'm going to sketch that out or not, but sure it is out of scope of the project, but sure that there's sufficient room for one. The problem you have is on, actually, on the east side, is there's an elevation difference, someone's going to have to figure that out, that's not us. Oh, and then the last thing we talked about before as well, from going back to Mr. Rutter's comment about the southern property line, are we able to provide that for a bridge? We actually have contractual for a bridge.
I sent it to John, he has it.
Okay, so if you need that, I guess.
I think also the motor, you can cut down an impervious surface, that would be the better for most people, they could have more park-like, you know, more with, you know, you know, cut down on the impervious surface.
Now, just so you know, we already have a SWIP stormwater pollution prevention plan that's submitted, and I actually got reviewed once with TGR, we're providing comments, but what we're going to do, as we go through our plan, we're hopefully, like you said, look at some areas where we can shrink up on that, but what we'll do is we'll keep the analysis as is, just because, you know, conservative planning, I don't want to make it a small one from a stormwater system point of view. So don't beat us up if those impervious numbers are higher than the SWIP.
No, that won't have a positive impact on the split, you could provide more storage that's actually needed, and your storage is underground, so you're not using more space, so that's fine.
And that fence on the west side, is where it begins, is that determined by the DOT? Because I'm wondering on a clearance, it might be too close to the road.
They made comments on that, I don't know. It's outside the right of way, so, but we can, we'll just say triangles on it, but I thought, that'd be more for you guys than it would be for them, but.
Well, I'm just, again, I'm emphasizing safety and visual clearance, and I mean, the way it looks on the map, I think it could be, you know, pushed down a little farther.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
I don't know for sure.
Actually, the use of that site has changed, hasn't it?
Yes, the daycare center's not there anymore. And remind us, was there going to be a six-foot high fence?
Yes.
And with the trees?
Yes. So what we'll do is we'll pull that back, because originally we were keeping it for a little longer for port of use, but.
I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, I think, you know, again, the visual sight is very important.
We actually looked at that more on the other drive, because if you notice that, we actually show that seventy-five feet there, because we got them, we'll make sure.
Are you sure that was a six-foot fence? I thought we discussed an eight-foot fence.
You need a variance for an eight-foot fence.
Anything above six feet needs a variance?
Yeah.
But keep in mind that, green-wise, that, at least the west side, probably pretty well up, that six foot is going to.
I made that point.
And what size are those trees that you're going to put in there, height-wise?
I don't know, let's see, plenty, but, um.
Roughly, I mean, are they going to be like six foot high?
Yeah, they're inch diameter, so I think they got to be six foot tall.
So, board members, are there anything, you know, that's really measurable? Again, Larry, do you have anything that?
I wanted to make sure that they had the marked up comments here, some of the things that we discussed at the meeting tonight, the sheet with the red markups, and also the CAC comments. John, did you give them?
Fairly certain I've given them everything, but I'll double check.
Oh, they can have mine, mine actually copy.
You can have Larry's copies.
If you have a room on that, I'd love to.
Yeah.
Oh, did you agree to think we discuss?
Well, no, there were other things mentioned here tonight than what was just there, oh, yeah.
Another concern that came up is the, we talked about the potential noise from the pumps, as well as if there was piped music speakers on the outside, and you agreed that if it was too loud, if the noise drifted off-site, you would turn it down. How do we, how do we, oh, I don't know, how do we confirm that, or?
Mitigate that.
You know, that's one of our concerns, I think, you can understand, maybe your opinion of being okay may be different from the neighbors' or the code officer's opinion. Do we do a noise test? I mean, I don't know how to measure that.
I think your measurement would be whoever forces you to go.
Yeah, I think you're better than, obviously, it needs to be turned down.
Your messages, other than the music, your messages also play on your video screens. Is there any reason not to just cut out the audible?
I will look at those and we'll make that.
That way you won't have to pay for the elevator music.
Well, it's be something that we address in our comments next month.
Okay, so that is a big, I think it is a concern that we heard.
That's still an old point that I've been carrying here for several meetings, in order of how we address that.
Yeah, it's just the noise drifting off your site onto the neighbors, and it is a mixed-use neighborhood, you have the B&amp;B located across the road, diners across the street on the porch, so, okay.
The other question I had was signage, and I haven't gone over our sign ordinance in enough detail to know how many signs are allowable on a particular site. Yeah, not too many.
Typically, it's two.
Yeah, we talked about that, did you talk, did you look over the sign ordinance? I think you're going to have to get a variance, I believe.
I don't think we finalized that, just because we're still going back and forth on the actual elevations that we were providing to you guys.
And do posters and windows count?
What's that, Deb?
Do posters and a window count as signs?
Like sale ads? I don't think so. No.
Or.
I think that is, that is in the sign ordinance, I believe it addresses that, I don't know how it reads, but I believe that's in there.
I have to review that.
I don't think that's addressed in the sidewalks.
Oh, isn't it? I thought we.
And I don't think that was. Well, a lot of it's up to the code officer to interpretation of how he's going to enforce it. You know, when I talked to him about Marabado, I saw signs everywhere.
Yeah.
Every pump had a sign on top, it was like, well, there's eight signs, there's a sign at the corner, there's a sign at the building, there's posters, there's sale signs that are stuck out on the side of the road, so a certain amount of that is the code officer determining how they're going to enforce that.
The only thing we do is we do a sign package after, we get through the site like pool processes, but that's usually the sign vendor, those two works with the code officer and all those things.
Jamie, could you submit a preliminary sort of sign package? I think that would just be helpful. Part of the board's purview is to locate the signs on the site. We did, we often, I think we drafted, we may not have submitted, we have a draft of. Yeah, I got a shape that shows, that shows like one monument sign, but I. Yeah, I think there were two.
There was that.
But we'll revise it and have something more complete for you. And then we can just, we can just review it under the sign.
Okay, yeah, Lynn?
I just think that, I think what we're referring to is a tasteful, there's a monument sign, but then there's chicken, two ninety-five type signs, and it's how that is handled, and what you, you know, do away with the audio with the pump, I think that'd be big.
Okay, let's, oh, Dale?
Well, just one issue, and it's been brought up in the past, and I know it's an old issue, one of the things that was talked about a lot here in the hearing was the noise, the big trucks, and all the truck traffic that goes by, et cetera, et cetera, and it is, you know, it's a major truck route, and by encouraging trucks to come in here to buy diesel and giving them parking space, you're encouraging them to enter your area, so you're encouraging more noise. I was wondering if you'd given any more thought to doing away with the diesel fuel station?
No, so that's part of the reason why we put the fueling station behind the building, is to keep that away from, away from the road, away from the, giving them more space maneuver, but the whole piece of this project is the diesel fuel, yeah, that is a must-have on our project.
For financial, for your financial.
All the other sites have, yeah, all the ones.
I'm just curious how you think that it's going to increase truck traffic when the trucks, I mean, Monday through Friday, just being that I live, I don't think you're, they pass here anyway, you're encouraging them to stop for gas perhaps, but I don't think like, we're not Cortland, right, we're not I-81, I don't think people are going to come here, you know, all the way out here and fuel up.
Well, I don't think you're encouraging more truck traffic.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought I misunderstood you.
And I'm not saying that the truckers don't need this, it's just that I'm questioning this location to do it, that's the only thing I'm questioning. No, I don't think you're necessarily going to get more truck.
Okay, I missed, I misheard you.
Okay, let's review real quickly then, for the next meeting, you're going to provide us with answers to the public's concerns, hopefully the DOT will have something for the board or the town for their review. You're going to work with getting some sort of study done?
Yeah.
And any idea on a timeframe on that?
No, I've already, we'll find out what they give us for the scheduling timeframe.
Do you think that would be available in a short month?
That's a tight time.
All right.
That is a tight time.
It is.
I have a number of projects for the gentleman that we're talking.
Okay, okay, so hopefully, hopefully we'll have it, if we don't have it, okay, that, we understand, so, and then you'll do a drawing for the sidewalks, propane storage, was there anything else, folks? Did I miss that?
Eventually, we're going to need Dean's planning schedule.
Oh, yeah, the planning.
He already had, so I'm sure you don't want that.
Planning schedule and signage, you're also going to provide that if you haven't already, anything else that I missed? And then we'll work on and review, make a quick review of part two to make certain that it is, because we did have questions on part one, so double-check part two, if there is.
there is some changes, make sure we get the revised changes. And I think that's it. I think we're set for tonight then, folks?
No.
Dale, or John, or Tom? There's been people here for over two hours, the public. It was no privilege of the floor. Are we going to allow people to do a privilege of the floor tonight? No, I made a comment earlier that we're not going to open it up for both the dandy mart or the, so ours is that they would set, they would make their comments to us in writing. We've already closed the public hearing, so if they want to make comments, it would come to us via in writing. So there are going to be no more public hearings? Unless it's up to the board members if they want to open that back up again.
We left that possibility open. We need to discuss that once we get to the rest of the written comments.
So I, as I said earlier, if they want to make a comment, please put it in writing. It'll get to us, as well as being posted on the town's website.
And if you see any comments, please support them.
Yes, I believe they all, the comments come to us as well as you. Correct, Heather? They get? Okay, I think we're set for tonight. Motion to end the meeting then?
So moved.
Larry, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks.